Good evening and welcome to the April 23, 2024 meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. Before we begin with public comment, Fred Hansen was a reporter for the Patriot Ledger for more than four decades. And for as long as we can remember, he covered civic events here in Milton. And in covering us and in covering our events, he was part of our community. And it was always a joy to see Fred and talk about the latest book he was reading, or something about history, or something about sports. It was always enjoyable to talk to Fred. And it's a great loss, a sudden passing just the week before last was a great loss to certainly to us, to all of his colleagues at the Patriot Ledger, and to his family and friends. And so before we have a moment of silence, I don't know if anyone else wants to say anything about Fred, but I know Mr. Wells has been known quite well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you're correct. I've known Mr. Hansen for more years, and I can come up to my role before I was chief, when I was on the police department, and that's seven years that I've been here. Fred's one of the people who many nights sat in the audience, like we see here tonight, and really never said a word. He just copied what he heard. He wrote stories about the story, the issues that we covered. He would, in his coolest of ways, highlight and create a story out of often things that we didn't even know. For me, particularly in my time as chief, there were issues where many times I was with Fred, things that were joyous, and oftentimes there were things that were very tragic. And Fred was extremely proud of his time with the Ledger. The Ledger was a much bigger place in its heyday, when it was located over off of Center Street, where actually I think BJ's is now, was their main offices years ago. I suppose if Fred was sitting here tonight, and I think Elaine Carroll is probably the one person who can relate to this, is his colleague who sat here many nights with him. Fred, as much as he will be missed, and as much as he served his community and his profession so well, I think he would probably chuck on his own quiet way that he died with his boots on, because he actually dropped dead as he was leaving Braintree Town Hall two weeks ago after covering the Braintree School Committee meeting. And I think Fred, if he were to have picked that way, and would have write the story himself, I can only imagine in his own extraordinary way, it would have been extraordinary story. So God rest his soul, and thank Fred for all he did for this community and for so many others in his journalistic ways for so many decades. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So if we may, if you could join us just for a moment of silence for the memory Thank you for that. Item three is public comment. By policy, we allot 21 minutes, up to 21 minutes for public comment, up to three minutes per speaker. Mr. Milano will count the, keep track of the 21 minutes. I will keep track of the three minutes. And what we typically do is alternate between those in person and those online. We start with those in person. So if there's anyone here for a public comment in person, if you could come up and sign in, please, with your name and address, and then tell us your name and address, and then you'll have up to three minutes. But the clock won't start until you start.
So. So. My name is Tucker Smith. I'm a resident of Milton, 1632 Canton Avenue, 45 years. And I'm here to support the incredible work that the Climate Action Planning Committee has been doing, and in particular, to support the recommendation to increase its members from nine to 11 people. The commitment to research and write a climate action plan is significant, and especially tailoring it to Milton's, you know, particular needs. I'd say it needs more worker bees, more human resources, in order to efficiently and successfully accelerate this project. The climate clock really is ticking, not only in Milton, but everywhere. And in order to meet the state's mandate of net zero by 2050, it would be extremely helpful if they had additional volunteer resources. So I encourage you to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tucker. All right.
Does anybody have their hands up?
No one has their hands up online. All right. Do we have anyone else here in person who wishes to participate in Citizen Speak? And online, if there's a telephone, it would be star nine? Star nine. There we go. Now I'm getting it. Finally getting it after a whole year. All right. Last chance, anyone who wants to participate in Citizen Speak? Going once, going twice? All right. On we go.
Mr. Chair, could we since, is there any chance we could move up? Is it 22 public comment response? I want to just.
Public comment response.
Response is 18.
18, yeah. Could we move that up, just since she's here? I'll just be brief.
Sure, sure.
So.
If there's no objection.
Is that right?
This is an action item on the agenda as well.
Yeah.
Right.
Number eight, we're going to vote to do the, we're going to address.
I can comment on that. All right, so I'll do it then. Very good. I'll comment then. Very good.
Great.
I would draw my request.
Okay. All right. Great.
So we won't even have to do that tonight.
All right. Item four, Nipponset River Watershed Association and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council update on the Nipponset River Watershed Regional Climate Resilience Collaborative and Flood Model Phase Two Project. That's a mouthful.
It is. It is. We're working on the title. Resilient Nipponset is what we're.
That's a, that's much better.
We even have a logo we'll be unveiling.
All right.
Very exciting. All right. Let me see.
If you could just make sure to introduce yourselves and talk into the microphone so everyone can hear you, not only here, but all the people watching at home.
I'll start while she's working on the computer. Martin Pillsbury, the Director of Environmental Planning at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which is your local friendly neighborhood regional planning agency to which Milton and all the surrounding communities belong.
And my name is Carrie Snyder. I'm the Managing Director for Community Resilience at the Nipponset River Watershed Association. So we are here to just update you on a project that is completing its second year this June. And Milton has been a strong partner throughout, so we just wanted to let you know how things are going and where we're headed.
Great.
So for those of you and those in the audience who might not know who the Nipponset River Watershed Association is, we are a member-supported nonprofit conservation organization covering 14 cities and towns, from Foxborough all the way up to Boston. And our mission is to protect and clean up the Nipponset River and its watershed lands. And we do that through a variety of programs, including public education, outreach, and advocacy.
And the Metropolitan Area Planning Council is the regional planning agency designated by state legislation some 60 years ago, in the early 60s, to cover a planning district that includes 101 municipalities, kind of with Boston at the center, but we go, as you can see on this map, up at the North Shore, as far as Ipswich, down to the South Shore, as far as Duxbury, and out to the Metro West Route High 495 region. So Milton here is close to the center of the region, and is part of a couple of our different subregions. We have nearly half the population of the entire state in this one region. And then there's 12 other regions that share the other half. So we're disproportionately large region. We're fortunate, being a large region, to have some pretty, you know, good staff resources and technical resources, including GIS mapping and that sort of thing. And watershed planning is one of the things that we've done. And actually, MAPC has partnered with the Nipponset River Watershed Association on previous projects as well, including the Nipponset Stormwater Partnership, which is another initiative that Milton has been participating in. So we sort of have a long history of joy working with the Watershed Association. We have a lot of common goals in mind. This project on climate resilience is a good example of that for today. So starting off with maybe just giving a little bit of a very broad brush introduction and context setting, the project we're working on has a lot of focus on flooding. There's a very sophisticated flood model that's been developed and is continuing to be evolved. But we also want to remember that climate change has many other impacts that we're concerned about, including, you know, on the coastal side, sea level rise here, just a little bit beyond the sea level rise here, but not far, with, you know, Tidal River nearby. Wind and, you know, extreme, more and more of these extreme events that seem to be happening more frequently, and high temperatures, you know, that we seem to be getting more, and especially in urbanized areas where you have more buildings and asphalt, that just exacerbates the high temperatures, which really are having an impact on, sort of a public health impact on at least the parts of the population that are most vulnerable to those sorts of things. So there's lots of different ways in which these changes in our climate are then having consequences, both on our built environment, our infrastructure, our people, and like I mentioned, public health, our economy. There's many, many ways that all of these things are stranded together. And so a project like this that we're working on, hopefully will have sort of benefits that reach out in many different ways over a long term, but it is also a long-term problem. It's a long-term project. So it's the kind of thing we need to sort of keep at it and keep moving ahead to sort of see some incremental progress on this. It's not unlike your previous speaker, who was talking about the Climate Adaptation Plan, where that's dealing with the other major aspect of climate, reducing the greenhouse gases, so we do what we can to reduce how severe the problem is. This project is recognizing that no matter what we do, we have some degree of climate change already happening, already baked into the process, and we need to then also be better prepared for that and to increase our resilience. So that's kind of the philosophy and the goal for this kind of a project.
So first, I want to thank Milton for being a leader in climate resilience building and for joining with us, not only the Nipponset Stormwater Partnership, but also this resilient Nipponset project. So we are in phase two of the project. We began in August of 2022, and we're going to run through at least June of 2025. One of the major deliverables of this project was a, or is a, computer flood model of the entire watershed. And the reason we felt it was important to do this and come together around this is that water doesn't stop at the town border. What happens upstream affects what's happening downstream, and so we wanted to make sure that we had a tool that you and other municipal officials could use to plan for climate resilience. So this is just one example. On the left, we see the percent increase in flooded areas, so where we expect flooding to spread in 2070. And then on the right, it's an increase in volume or depth of some of that flooding. So perhaps we're seeing flooding in similar areas that we see now, but we're going to see more water in those areas. And this is just another way of looking at it. So this looks at part of Milton, right around Pine Tree Brook. And this is looking at the 100-year event. So this would be a rain event that has a 1% chance of happening in any given year. The blue you see is what FEMA has mapped out as the floodplain, but the green is where our model says the floodplain really is. FEMA is backwards-looking, whereas this model is trying to incorporate more updated rainfall data and trying to make predictions. The orange is where we expect that flooding to expand to in 2070. And again, this is a rain event that has a 1% chance of happening annually. So we hope that this can be a tool. It is not, because it's watershed-wide, we can't use it to plan a specific project, but it can help us identify areas of higher risk for further study, so that we can take a closer look at them, maybe model a community-based, you know, neighborhood area, and come up with some strategies that might reduce the impact of this changing rainfall. Another deliverable for this project was to come up with a framework around which all of the towns in the Nipponset River watershed could come together to work on regional solutions to all climate impacts, so not just flooding, but the impacts of heat waves and wind storms, because no community can do this by themselves. It's expensive to do adaptation projects. And again, because we're all going to be feeling the same impacts, it makes sense for us to work together because we're working towards the same thing. So last year, we came up with this proposed framework. We went through all of the town's existing plans, so hazard mitigation plans, open space and recreation plans, MVP plans, and we brought municipal staff together to really prioritize these shared issues. And we came up with a framework document. What we're going to be doing in phase two is we're working to, on a work plan, which will sort of guide how the towns can work together and what makes sense, what regional projects make sense to work on together. We also held a workshop to sort of identify best practices in regulatory updates that will help communities grow in a sustainable and resilient manner. We had our second workshop just last week, where we talked about green infrastructure and showed some examples and case studies of how green infrastructure has been implemented in surrounding towns, and, you know, what that might look like in the Nipponset. And finally, another big part of the project is public engagement. In order to get things done at the town level, you need public support, and for the public to support it, it needs to take into consideration their top concerns. So we're trying to build capacity among the public to engage around climate resilience building and help them communicate better with planning agencies, et cetera. So we go out, and this is a King Tide event we did recently, so we're getting people out there on field trips, we're holding public meetings, we're in the classroom, we visit fifth-grade classrooms throughout the watershed to talk about stormwater pollution and flooding, as well as water conservation. And we're always doing, you know, just general education about climate change. So what's next? We have a community advisory group that we've assembled that's meeting quarterly, and that's a group of residents, primarily from community-based organizations, and we're trying to empower them to engage more in this work. We've got our Climate Collaborative Steering Committee, which we'll be working on the work plan for the collaborative. And we'll have our main public meeting for this fiscal year on June 11th, and we'll be sending out some promotional materials about that very soon.
That's it?
Great. Thank you, Carrie, and thank you, Martin. Comments or questions from the members? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just a question about, I know you identified areas where it would possibly flood in Milton. We border a lot of air, a lot of towns, you know, Quincy, Austin, so forth. So on the borders, do you also have mapping if it's, you know, another town that we abut, like Quincy or something? Do you have that so we can see if there's anything, say, very close to our border?
We do. So this model is the entire freshwater portion of the watershed. So, and because we wanted to show sort of where this water is moving from outside of Milton into Milton, we have a separate project that's ongoing on the estuary side, so from the Baker Dam to the harbor. But this model is from the Baker Dam upstream.
Okay. So like High Park, for instance?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for this extraordinarily important work that's really needed now more than ever. I first want to say I love the logo. If that was your sample logo.
Thank you.
Really, really good. And I think Resilient Nipponset is fantastic. And the Nipponset River, it always blows my mind when I'm driving around how windy that river is. And I grew up in the Midwest where the river is just kind of one direction for all on the east.
I know. I'm sorry about that. All right. Well, here, now I get the feedback. Anyways, I complimented the logo, so I want that to be on the record. So the Nipponset River, very, very twisty, turny. It's kind of a wild basin when you look at it system-wide. In your presentation, you talked about the 1 in 100-year event, and I just want to go back to that real quick for my question, because I think last year in Vermont, we saw a 1 in 100-year event. It was more like a 1 in 1,000-year event. And we hear this get thrown around a lot when we watch the weather and the news lately, that we're seeing 100 events every 10 years, every, you know, much more often than we might see. So I'm just curious, and, you know, as you do the planning around these large events, are you planning specifically for those events? And, you know, do you have like a direct line in to FEMA, to the governor, so that if we're seeing a system move in that might generate that kind of rainfall, that municipalities can put some preventative measures in place to the extent that is possible?
Yes. So everybody is pretty much working from the same dataset in Massachusetts. We've got a really good dataset. And we, almost everybody who's predicting this is looking out to 2070. In 2070, the 500-year storm of today is going to be the 100-year storm of 2070. So we already know that we're headed in that direction. And so ideally, everybody's going to be moving quickly to really catch up, so that we're not behind. But that's going to take, you know, everybody working together and being pretty aggressive.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Other comments or questions? Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both. I fall in the Nipponset very closely. I sit on our committee here. I attend your Shawn's meetings, regular meetings. I'm familiar with the work that Senator Goldens started on Save Hawaii, Save the Bay, with his outlook from the saltwater side coming in. So there are a million questions I could talk about, but I'm going to not do that to you tonight.
I know. I apologize. It's a lot of information.
I know. And I think just to kind of give like an overview of what, in a layman's terms, is when you go get the coastal, the coastal preparedness that homes along the seacoast, all the way from the neck across Wallston down through, you know, how they're preparing there, in a way, what I believe I'm seeing, if we're seeing, is that for communities like us upstream are going to have to be proactive in how we zone, build, reconstruct, things of that nature.
Yes.
To make way for this. The only question I just want, and I probably shouldn't ask you, maybe I'll bring it up for the next committee, the regular meeting, is that in the cleanup, in the EP, in the Superfund cleanup, particularly on the upwind stream area, if they were to dredge the river deeper, if they were to take more out to allow for more water to be held in the body of the river, from Baker Dam to the Motherbrook, do you think that, and I know I'm asking you a million-dollar question, because it just popped in my head, because I know the effects of dredging, but yeah, I never thought of it in respect to a freshwater dredge. Do you think that would help to give you more, to be able to hold more water in the mainstream, as compared to, you know, perhaps prevent some of that runoff? And you don't even have to answer that. I just gave, I think you know what I mean. I think you kind of get what I'm.
I do. And that is something, so we are always looking for more funding for these studies. And one of the things we want to look at is sort of the relationship between the flow from the Charles through Motherbrook downstream, what happens if we, you know, if we take the TNH Dam out, for example, because it's in terrible disrepair, and it's not, neither that nor the Baker Dam are flood control dams, so I'm not sure we can ever use it like that.
We know.
But that is definitely something we want to take a closer look at and really model that, so that we can make some better predictions.
If I could, maybe I'll add to that a little bit. I think that what we're looking at in the watershed, the thing that would do more than trying to hold more water in the river, is find places on the land in the areas that contribute to.
To disperse it, right.
To hold back the water, to have more retention, everything from little rain gardens or lots of little properties to something larger. In fact, we're looking for places where we can actually do that. And that would, you want to prevent the water from getting into the minstrel of the river to begin with. Once it's there, you've lost the battle. It doesn't take much to fill up whatever you could dredge out.
Whatever it is that you.
You know, a 10-year storm even would probably fill that up. So that might have other benefits, but I think that really you want to look for places to retain and store the water throughout the watershed. And it's one of those things, like you remember the phrase, "a thousand points of light"? It's like a thousand points of retention, if we could just find, and it'll take a long time to do that, but if we can kind of readapt our watersheds back to function a little bit more like they did before we paved them all over to begin with, we could actually coexist, would still have development, but have it not interfering with the hydrologic cycle as much. So that's what I would say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I won't ask any more questions.
We love those questions.
Other comments or questions?
Just a quick follow-up on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the rain garden concept, something that I've run into. Yeah, I think, you know, in a town like Milton, which has, you know, an abundance of single-family housing with the yards, a lot of which are just grass and not so great in terms of the absorption, I wonder if, do you all put on clinics or instructions or classes, maybe with like local, you know, here or, you know, with local gardening clubs, about how to design or create a rain garden? Because I hear you, it's sort of the climate change battle in a nutshell, right? Like there's, everybody needs to pitch in and do something, and communities need to work together. And we can't just sit back and assume that we're going to be able to zone, you know, 50 acres of floodplain to absorb. If we could get, you know, some of the, you know, 10,000-plus single-family unit homes to put in just a small rain garden, it would make a pretty big difference. I'm curious if you put on workshops, or how you're looking at moving that into the individuals.
You guys do some schoolwork, right?
We, I think, and I think we've done something like that in the past, and we're always looking for other ways to, you know, help people do what, you know, take action on their own level, their own scale. So that is something that we were talking about, and if that's something you would like to see, I've left my card. Send me an email, remind me, and we will definitely look at, because maybe we could hook up with the Milton Garden Club or something like that.
And it's a level of what the town can do, like on public facilities, et cetera. One of the tools we've recently developed is a computer model, where you can take a look at the land, the parcels of land in your town, characteristics on soil slope and that sort of thing, and identify sites that could be favorable for onsite retention, whether it's a rain garden or a swale or other kinds of things. So that's a tool that we actually were just trying out and showing to the folks at this workshop we held a couple of weeks ago. That's available online at our site.
Yeah, because I see Glover Elementary Schools in the green here, and that's obviously town property. And then the high school and where the new middle school is going to be are also right up against that. So both of those would seem to be places where we could potentially work together and figure some solutions out. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
All good. Thank you.
Martin and Carrie, you said the public meeting is June 12?
June 11.
June 11?
Yes.
And that will be, is that something that we could help publicize, or that you are publicizing?
I would love that. Thank you.
I don't know that, maybe you can connect with our town administrator and make sure we get the word out here in Milton about that meeting as well.
Yes, and it's a virtual meeting, so, you know, we're trying to make it as easy as possible for as many people to join us as possible.
And maybe we can put it on our website to help out with the public, you know, publicity.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Keep us up to date.
Will do. Thank you again, Carrie, for your help.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
June 11. That's right. All right. Item five, we are joined by the Chair of our Local Historic District Study Committee, Larry Lauffer, who has a presentation on Warren Article 40 for the establishment of a local historic district commission and the Milton Village Historic District. Welcome, Larry.
I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you for inviting me. I'm Larry Lauffer. I've been living in Milton since 1994 at 196 Cliff Road, not too far from here. Six years ago, the Select Board decided that they were listening to the Milton Historical Commission, who wanted to name a local historic district here in town. Three years ago, that committee was actually set up. In the last three years, we have studied federal historic districts, state historic districts, getting down to local historic district, what we should do here. What is history? Why is it important? How can we protect our town? And how can we let our town grow? We're here since 1662. I'm going to assume, if we're not underwater, we're going to be here another couple of hundred years. And I think it's important that we save some of the history. In our study, we never had any intention of ever doing anything that would either slow growth or cause problems. We wanted to allow growth to happen, because Milton has benefited from that growth for hundreds of years now, and we wanted to let that continue. So in that process, we started first with the federal historic districts. We have six or seven of them here in the town. Depends on, you know, whether you want to include the cemetery or not. It's not going anywhere. We don't have to worry about it going anywhere. But we wanted to know how and why something is named historical, from the federal level, then from the state level, and then what we wanted to do is it comes down to the local level. We never touched the local level for the first year and a half, because we really wanted to understand what was going on, not just here in Milton, but across the state. And across the state, there's over 350 communities that could have local historic districts. 166 are. 166 or 167, I think we would be 168 if, if we get voted in on this. The good news is, in doing all of this work and talking to all these different committees, we have a great deal of support for the idea of protecting Milton. Because as a town, we also have some people with some concerns, and I can address those concerns now, and I will at the town meeting. The first concern that the warrant commission, warrant committee had was that it was somehow going to slow growth. Well, what we did is we invited the actual Milton residents who are actually doing the development in Milton Village, which is the area we're designating first. We invited them to not just one public meeting, but several public meetings, and we engaged them. Their concern, like every developer, is don't slow us down, don't charge us more, don't set up things, hoops that we have to jump through. And we were very carefully listened to that. And yes, because not my committee, and I'm going to talk about this in a moment, not my committee, but the next committee that is created from this, if we go forward, that committee is the one that has the power to make decisions about what we're going to include, what we're going to exclude. We have a lot of that in our bylaw. But when we got down to the local level, we had to talk to the state, because our proposal first had to be approved by the state. The state has a variety of promulgated forms that other towns have used, and we were given those, those forms. And we worked with those forms to create our form. But we didn't create any of these forms. These forms were put in place because this is a two-step process. You first name a district, then you name the commission within that, that proposal, and that commission begins to do the nuts and bolts of how you're going to apply all of the different aspects of what, what we're trying to protect. And so we are not worried that we're going to slow down, especially the, the two developers that I spoke to that live in the Milton Village and work in the Milton Village area, we're not going to slow them down at all. Their proposals are already into town, and, and it's moving through its process. So I'm not worried about the development. These, these people are savvy. They're not people from away, as they say in Maine. They're people who are right here, who care about the town, and their concern is, don't slow them down. We're not going to be the impediment for that. One of the concerns that the warrant commission had was that this second commission that is appointed, elected, assigned, however we do that, that they're going to have too much power. I'm, I'm a volunteer. Most of the people on the warrant commission are volunteers. This town benefits from the, the caring of our community that stands up and said, I don't need anything for this, I'm here for my community. Most of those people aren't power hungry. This isn't an HOA. This is a community-town meeting. And, and so I'm really not worried about whether they are appointed or elected. Elected puts a little more onus on the person who wants to be on the committee. Being appointed is kind of, hey, you, do you want to do it? And we have the ways in which the people are going to be appointed, much like my committee was appointed. The final thing is, the warrant commission was.
Yes, Mr. Wells.
You keep referring to the warrant commission. I think you're talking about the warrant committee?
I'm sorry?
Yes, yeah.
You're referring to the warrant committee, okay.
That's right.
I'm hearing warrant commission, I'm like, warrant commission?
No, no, warrant committee, yeah. He meant, he means the warrant.
It's a committee. It's a committee.
Oh, I call it a commission.
Yeah, warrant committee, and I'm sitting here going.
Thank you for.
I thought you took it from somewhere else.
Yeah, I'm a volunteer.
That's all right, I get it. All right.
Thank you for that. The final concern they had, and we have this too, in this proposal, it states that you can be fined $5 to $500 a day for anything that you do wrong. So that's a lot. That is a lot. How are we going to collect that? Who's going to do that? What are the, the rules? That is not our committee to determine. But we had to create a bylaw, and if it's a bylaw, it's a law. And so the concern with the, the warrant committee is that someone could come in and all filled with, hey, I don't want this, or I don't want that, I want everybody to have white picket fences. It's not set up for that to be permitted at all. If you read the proposal, we were very careful. We did not want to be one of those towns, and as much as I love it, like Nantucket, where everything has to be uniform. We didn't want that, because that's not what Milton is. Milton is great because of its diversity, because it has grown over the years, and different areas have grown, and we continue to do that. We want to allow that. So those are the three concerns that the warrant committee had. We were just thrilled that we're, we are near the end of the first process. And this first process from here goes to the town meeting, where we're going to need a two-thirds vote on this. We haven't got much pushback at all from anybody about, is this a good idea or a bad idea? We have some concerns, but no pushback, which is rare in town politics. So we're hoping that we can answer the simple questions that, that the warrant committee had for us before the town meeting. And personally, as a chairman, I don't care if the, the next committee is elected or appointed. Makes no difference to me personally, but I'm not on the select board. I'm not going to make that determination. It's going to be made after my committee has done its work. Our process was top-down. We studied the national first, we went to the state. It's really interesting, and I don't have enough time now to tell you three years of study, but it's really fascinating about what towns find to be important. And it's always an important building, and Milton has a number. It's the, the fact that the industrial revolution was changed because of the Napaunset River going by the Baker Chocolate Factory, and there was a steel mill there, and it changed the way industry was working in the United States, and that started here. So many different things. We are going to have to go back to the state with the final elected proposal, but if there are any changes because the town has accepted it, they accept it, unless it's something egregious, and it wouldn't be. We know what would be egregious, and none of these things are. I think we didn't even show that boring PowerPoint, did we, Nick?
We got it today.
Well, if it's boring, Larry.
We got it today.
Maybe that's a good thing.
Well, it's, it, what it is, this PowerPoint, do you want to pull it up and?
I've already seen.
I distributed it to the board members, so they have.
We've seen it. We've seen it.
Maybe we can go to comments and questions, then, if everyone's seen it.
Questions are better.
Yeah, comments and questions?
Mr. Chair, just a point. Can we put it on the website?
Yes.
Is it doable?
Yes.
All right, is that all right with you, sir?
I'm sorry? I'm hard of hearing, and you're hard for me to hear.
Are you all right if we put it up?
And that's a surprise, right?
That's all right, no, no. Are you okay if we put it up on the town website so residents can see?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And I denigrated it. It has all of the information that's necessary. It's not pretty. I like pretty.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regards to the fines, it's pretty wide, $5 to $500. So I'm just wondering, I suppose that would be something for the next committee to be.
It is.
To be looking at. And I'm just wondering what other towns are doing, so I would anticipate they'd probably look at some of these issues that you brought up.
Yes.
Compared to other towns that have it.
Yes. And that is exactly the case. And the other side of that is, how are you going to collect this money?
Right.
You know? So what the fine is, if someone is going to be fined, that's going to be determined by the next committee.
Okay. Mr. Wells?
So the fine's not really an issue for me. I think the fine can be written into the bylaws. Is any other zoning fine?
Yeah.
I mean, I know a little bit about fining, so it's, I don't see that as being, my only question is, so I have two questions. Has the warrant committee voted, Mr. Chair? Were they not approved?
Yes.
So they've approved?
No.
They did not approve?
No.
Okay. And my second question is, elected versus appointed, where did the thought of an elected come from?
I'm sorry, ask again.
You said elected versus appointed.
Oh, elected versus.
Where did the thought of elected come from?
From the warrant committee. The warrant committee thought if you're appointed, you have too much power, and the committee becomes too powerful. Those were their two concerns about that. And my thing is, the person who brought it up is appointed. I'm appointed, you know, and.
I just don't know how you get people to run for, I just, I mean, that's, it's a lot of work to run for anything, just, never mind. That's just my own thoughts. So if the warrant committee voted no, Mr. Chair, is that what you're saying?
That's right. The warrant committee voted to not support the recommendation, to not, to not move forward with it. Let me ask Mr. Lauffer, the, yeah, I don't believe they voted to send it back. They voted, they voted to.
Yeah, they voted not to.
They voted not to move forward with it. The current proposal, Mr. Lauffer, is appointed. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. That's the current, so it would have to be amended at a town meeting to make it elected.
Right, right, right. And even, even the $5 to $500, even, even that, that's all going to be changed by the next committee, which the warrant committee didn't quite understand. They didn't quite that there's two separate complete entities. And I think appointed people are just as good as elected people.
And thank you.
Especially in this town, you know?
Mr. Zoll, oh, Mr. Zoll.
I'm just thinking a while, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would just echo, I think, Mr. Wells's comments about, I think, it's already, it's hard and expensive to run for office in this town. And I also feel like when you have an appointed committee, you can really select people who understand and kind of create a committee that has a diverse field of, you know, some historians, some architects, some business, community representatives, some local folks, so that you have a good mix of people, whereas if it's elected, it's kind of a plus-seven positions would be intense. So I'm a little surprised that the warrant committee thought that that would be a good idea, but it is what it is. I think, my, my one question is more of a comment, I think, but in the, for those of us, and unfortunately, I guess not everybody got their warrant, but for those of us who got our warrant, the part about the commission where it consists of seven members, and I gather from Mr. Milano that this came up at the warrant committee, that it says two members to be appointed for one year, two for two, and two for three, and I'm not a math whiz, but two plus two plus two is six, and not seven, so I'm guessing that we would have to amend that to have one of the.
Yes.
Would you have a recommendation about which one would be?
We absolutely do. So it, it was seven members, meant to be seven members, as my committee was meant to be seven members. It's hard, it's hard over three years with all the meetings, it's hard to keep volunteers engaged and active on it.
You're preaching to the choir.
Yeah, yeah, of cour, of course I am. Yes. But, so in terms of expertise, we're going to have somebody who's a realtor, a higher level of real estate agent, a AIA architect, someone who has a higher degree in architecture. We'd like to have, we have an attorney on our committee, but we don't, we don't have a land attorney. That'd be great to have. Two members who live in the area, Milton Village.
Right.
Or have, or have businesses. And one of those, I would suggest, I've already been lobbying him to, he should be on that board, so he has a voice on it. And then there's going to be a committee person at large from anywhere in the town, and there's going to be somebody from the Historical Commission, because the select board appointed us at the Historical Commission's recommendation, and my committee has a representative from the Historical Commission on my board. Very, very helpful, because they, they know the lay of the land.
Thank you. So that partially answers my question. My other question is, we're going to have to amend that, that particular section 4.1 because the numbers don't add up.
Yes.
It's six, so would you have a recommendation? Would you recommend that we appoint three for the first year, and then two, and then two? Or would you?
Yeah.
Okay. That was my other question. Thank you.
I wonder how many volunteers, you know, said, okay, come on for three years.
Yeah, that was my.
I was told a year. That seemed pretty good.
And they could potentially re-up if they wanted to, after, after they served the one-year term.
I think once you get involved in something like this, and I can only talk for my committee, that the people who were, they were dedicated to it, and everybody put a lot of effort into creating this.
It's very clear from this, so thank you very much for this work.
Thank you.
Gee, hard to run for elective office. I don't know where you get that. I don't know how that happens. Other comments or questions? All right, so we can, we can, we have obviously put this on the warrant. I don't think the board has taken a position yet. We could, we could defer on this until town meeting, if that's what the board wishes to do, and look into it further.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Yes, Mr. Zoll.
Are we going to be going through the, the whole warrant to sort of yea or nay each of the individual articles, or?
We've done that with some of them.
Yeah.
We could do that tonight, or we could, we could do it with some of them, or we could do it with, we could do it at town meeting.
The night at town meeting, each night, yeah. The night at town meeting is usually the better, the more before, at least.
Yeah. So, other comments or questions?
I'm with you, Mr. Wells. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm with you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, I didn't realize, that's why I asked you. I didn't know where the warrant committee was on this. So I'd like to, I, look, I'm, my dad grew up in that business district. I went to work there when I was 15 years old. I have, anyone who knows me knows I have a deep affinity for it, which is why I understand the reason I was here six years ago when this board was first. So I don't want to see it fail. So I'd like us to have, I'm more inclined to defer it versus vote, vote it down and try to see what we do. Maybe, maybe we could go before the warrant committee ourselves, and do we know what the vote was? Was it, was it like close?
Mr. Milano?
I don't recall.
Okay.
I have it in my notes.
Is it, is it much of the reason because they're concerned that they think it should be elected versus appointed?
No, I don't think that was a big thrust, and the general laws require it be appointed, so I think that's a moot point anyway.
Okay.
I just double-checked that. I think the, the, some of the comments that Mr. Lauffer was addressing, which the warrant committee raised, he was, he was raising some points in comparison. I think they talked about concerns about process for potential projects down there. You know, we are aware of two potential between J. Wild and Hajar's project. So I think there's concern about that and the impact it might have on those. The warrant committee comments are out now, it's online. You should be getting your warrant report, so.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I can, just to briefly summarize, the three reasons that they stated are, they believe it's a hurdle for business development, they believe that it shouldn't be an appointed committee, or this appointed committee shouldn't have this kind of power, and they believe that the fines are, are too variable, which I think all three of those questions have been answered pretty succinctly tonight. So I'm kind of of a mind that we should think about supporting this tonight, and then, you know, I think that maybe the warrant committee wants to come and create suggestions for what they might accept, but, you know, to just say no and not even to vote to send it back seems to be a real rejection of a lot of significant work that's been done by some really dedicated volunteers of this town. And I, I think that we should support them, but also express our willingness to continue to modify. Like I said earlier, we, there's already one amendment here that we would have to make. But I think the general thrust of the article is, is good. And, yeah, I think in the absence of a, of a commission like this, you know, we're actually at more risk than we are than, than having a commission.
I wonder, Mr. Zoll, if the better course is to come up with amendments and then vote, you know, to, rather than just vote and then come up with amendments, to come up with amendments and then, and then to, you know, to make the fixes and then have the vote, rather than just to kind of do it in a vacuum, but...
Yeah, because I think, I think, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to jump in.
No, no, please, yeah.
If, if the objection is the, the variable amounts of the fine, like Ms. Musto referred to earlier, you know, we could probably say something along the lines of, the commission shall set the fines and maybe put a ceiling on it, but not a floor, so that it doesn't go too, too high.
That's a good solution.
So this board...
Yeah, no, go ahead.
That's how many fines are. There's a, I believe that's probably why, because depending on the egregiousness of what the offense is, I mean, $5 might not be enough. So you have to give them the ability to find... I think you do, and, I mean, my gut is this is going to come, anything is going to come down to expectural services. That's who enforces fines on the civil side in this town, so I, I'm kind of inclined to like, I'd like us to go before them and talk to them, whether it's a couple, I don't care who it is, but that's my thought.
Thank you. I'd like to hear more from, about the warrant committee's decision and how they came about with that decision before we started approving anything. I think the concept is a good one, and I think a lot of good work has been done. And I think that we, to vote it either way today, I think, is a little short-sighted. That would be my take on it. It's on the warrant. It's going to come at the town meeting, and we could certainly discuss it before town meeting as well.
Yeah, let me suggest also that either the, the committee, Mr. Lauffer's committee, or this board could offer amendments to try to address some of the concerns of the warrant committee and try to get some consensus. So that could happen prior to town meeting. So it could either be done, Mr. Lauffer, by, by the means of a green sheet, which, you know, if your committee, your committee, which I believe is the sponsoring authority for the article. Was it us, or was it the, I think it was your...
That's the way I understood it.
The study commission, I believe. Were they the submitting articles right after the article?
It should be done. It's a long article, a lot of work. Submitted by the committee.
Right. So, so, Mr. Lauffer, you could, your committee could make proposed amendments, if you voted proposed amendments prior to town meeting, and, and issue them with what's called a green sheet, so that the town meeting members would get them...
What is it called again? I'm sorry?
A green sheet?
A green sheet.
So it's actually a green piece of paper, right?
Yeah.
That all the town meeting members will get as proposed amendments prior, or right at the beginning of town meeting, as they come into town meeting. And then the warrant committee's obligation at that time would be to consider the amendments. So, so that may be the best course for your, your committee to propose amendments, see if, and if your, your committee agrees, right, to propose amendments, have a green sheet, and then that would be considered by both this board and by the warrant committee prior, right, right prior to town meeting or at the floor of town meeting.
Sure.
And then, and then at least the town meeting members will have it in writing, rather than have it proposed, you know, just orally at town meeting.
Okay.
So I think that might be the best course, if there are amendments to be made. Just do it, Mr. Wells.
Do we know where Mr. O'Donnell was on this? I mean, to me, Steve's the guy who's, works, his committees just worked so hard for so long on historic, was there a member of the historic commission on your committee?
Bill Mullin.
Okay.
Yeah. He's the one with us.
Yep. So...
Go, sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Zoll.
I think that's a good solution, I think, you know, just to point out, too, that when, when town meeting members see the green sheet, they understand that it's, they're friendly amendments. So they understand that they're being made in the spirit of the body that put it together as, as trying to tighten up the language. So I think my recommendation would be, you know...
3-2-2.
Yeah, 3-2-2. I think you might want to get rid of the, the floor of the, of the fees, and then be more explicit that the commission will set...
It can be anything.
Yeah. I think, you know, to be determined by the commission. And then, as we've heard from, from Mr. Milano, the third concern of the warrant committee, we can't really, it is supposed to be an appointed committee. It's an elected committee. So that's kind of a moot point. So I think if you address those two, those two concerns, plus that concern being a moot point, that should, should, for the warrant committee, at least answer their questions.
And I don't think that we, we, as a committee, we're all appointed. We're happy to be, you know, to have it continue in that way.
Right.
I think it has to, so...
Yeah, I think it has to. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a...
It's not a question.
Yeah, yeah. Good. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Lauffer will look forward to a green sheet.
Thank you. Look forward to your, thank you so much for your help.
And Mr. Milano can help you with that in terms of, you know, how we, if, if your committee decides on amendments, just how you process green sheets.
Sure.
And, and then we'll see how it goes at town meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lauffer.
Thank you.
All right. Item six. We do, we do have the Climate Action Planning Committee people here. So perhaps we can take item eight out of order.
I'll move to take item eight out of order.
Seven first.
What's that? Item seven? What's, what's seven? Oh, seven is...
To amend the charge first.
Well, oh, I'm showing seven as the town meeting warrant.
That's what my seven is.
First is to recommend the appointment, a change of charge is number seven, and then to appoint is number eight.
So that's, so this, so, yeah, so this is different. So our motions are different.
I'm with you, I'm with you. My motion is different, too.
All right. So let me go to the actual agenda.
Sorry.
All right. So on the agenda, so seven is the discussion approval recommendation. That's it, you're right?
Correct.
Yeah, to make, to amend the charge, and number eight is to appoint the members.
Right.
So number eight, I think we're going to be deferring on, but let's have, I have it. Thank you. I have it. Why don't we ask the chair of our Climate Action Planning Committee and one of the members, our former chair, so it's Mr. Hasha and Mr. Doyle, to talk to us about items seven, the recommendation, which we heard about from Ms. Smith as well. We can, we can hear what, what you have. First, item seven, thank you for joining us.
Nice to be here.
Make sure we talk into the microphone, so everybody, so this is, oh, oh, an additional packet. Is this, Arthur, is this packet any different from what we have?
That's an additional piece that...
Oh, okay. Here we go.
Richard.
Explains the recommended amendment to the law, to the charge rather.
I see. It's, it's a mark draft. Okay. All right.
I cheated for that one. Who else? You go, Mr. Page.
We're good.
It's all yourself, and then you get to...
All right. Mr. Hasha and Mr. Doyle, welcome. Item seven, recommendation of the Climate Action Planning Committee to amend the charge to add two additional members.
Thank you. So my name's Alexander Hasha, and I chair the Climate Action Planning Committee, and this is a request and recommendation that we voted on at our previous meeting, and Mr. Doyle is going to speak to it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Arthur Doyle, member of the Climate Action Planning Committee. We have before you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the select board, the original charge from you to the Climate Action Planning Committee with on page two, some recommended modifications for your consideration and decision. The base recommendation is that the Climate Action Planning Committee membership be increased from nine to 11 members. And this is predicated principally upon the understanding, as the committee does its work, of the breadth and depth of the subject on which we are working, of the complexities that emerge, the predictions for the future, the need to have the right mix of people with the sciences and the finance and all of the other ingredients that go into the potential mitigation of climate action in a community. In that regard, we would have, you consider increasing from two to three the number of residents with such expertise, and then adding to the committee a student who would be a Milton resident, but may be attending any secondary school within or without the town of Milton. We did have an opportunity early this year to have a student from Milton High School meet with us. We had a very engaging discussion with that person, and based upon that, the, the committee unanimously recommended that we engage a student, and we have a member who has done that in his professional business. And we would ideally bring in somebody at the beginning of their June year, have them for a two-year term on the committee. So overall, that would be what we have before you with this particular item, number seven, and we would welcome any questions and recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Comments, questions? Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I love the addition of a high school student to this committee. I always like to see when we can get our young adults engaged in civic interests and activities. To me, this is a wonderful addition. I'd love to see more, but one is good. But this is, I just am really applaud you all for thinking forward and making sure that we are including our young voices, who are actually going to be the ones that are dealing with this impact of climate change, more so than I will be. So thank you for that.
Mr. Wells.
So that's what I had written down that I was going to bring early, and I was actually thinking above this high school student, I was thinking the possibility of staffing this committee, particularly for a semester each year with a, with an intern from a college, one of the local colleges around here, particularly someone who's studying environmental science, things, because it's, it's a big major now. It's, there are, there are a lot of new things that didn't exist when we went to college, Arthur. That, I just, I thought like today that we may want to staff with an intern if we could do that, and that might be something, we might be able to coordinate with the town planner's office for you. Just a, just a thought, but, not an appointment for us, but I'm, I'm happy with the proposal you've made so far tonight here.
We'd be very happy to bring that back to the committee. Thank you.
Other comments? Go, Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm supportive of this, like Ms. Bradley and Mr. Wells. I love to see a high school student, you know, for our own Milton High School, you know, they have really strong volunteer hour requirements for graduation, and I can think of fewer options that would be, like, attractive for, for a lot of students than to serve on a committee like this. And then the, the number of residents, I think increasing the number of residents is also very helpful, particularly when you look at the breadth, as you alluded to earlier, as we heard from earlier from our resilient Nippon's group, the breadth of the work that needs to go into planning for climate, the goals are ambitious. And, and if you have folks who are volunteering, as clearly you do, I say more power, more power to you and more power to those residents who want to get involved, because we all know that it's not easy to, to serve on these committees, and it's great if folks are motivated to, to apply. I mean, our Affordable Housing Trust, we're still looking for members, so, so I would say more power to you. I'm 100% supportive of this. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Other comment? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I also, you know, believe that it's great to have a high school student on this, so I think that's a great addition and another member as well. It looks like the terms, just to remind people, these are one-year terms, because I know you had said maybe for two years or so for a student, and it may end up that it works that way, but maybe there's another student who wants to be on after that. So I would say that. And for Mr. Wells's idea, perhaps that could be something as more of, you know, a semester, like a consultant almost, doing part of their internship with the committee, but not exactly a member of the committee, but an internship with the committee, so that it wouldn't be, you know, it would be hard to do this with somebody who's only going to be here maybe for a semester for a full-year appointment. Yeah. So you could maybe incorporate both.
Two things that may be helpful, just again, the one-year appointment, that person, like other members of the committee, could be appointed for his or her second, or their second year, and also the possibility of having students who are involved in the advanced placement environmental science course, which is a university-level course curriculum. So you're sort of mixing both together if we have somebody who's so inclined.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells.
No, go ahead. Nope.
So there's two points of history. The one that made me think of it was, Ms. Milano, we had Josh and Tim arranged to have with the UMass, the study...
Josh is gone.
But this, they did it for Josh.
Oh, sorry.
It's past work. It's already done.
I like where Josh is gone.
Josh coordinated it, but the work that was done, looking at the flooding in the Woff area on that ramp, and then prior to that, most people don't even realize that the bridge that crosses Pope's Barn was denied, designed and engineered by Northeastern Interns. They did all that work. So that's what made me think about a staff intern. So I'm happy with it, but you've made a case of, I think, everything tonight kind of highlights the importance of it, so... Will you make, you want to motion, Mr. Chair?
If I may, just to add, you mentioned Josh.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Bradley had a question. Sorry.
You mentioned Josh, and one of the things that Josh told me is that he went into the career he went into because of his taking an advanced placement environmental science course when he was in high school.
There you go.
Ms. Bradley.
So if I'm correct, Mr. Chair, this was something that I was not fully on board with when it was first presented to the select board, and I just wanted to say thank you, because I believe it was you that pushed this through with creating this, and, and to see that we need to add more members to it, because the residents of Milton are that excited about it, just goes to show you that you did a great job, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate all of you and what you've done. So thank you for this. All of you.
Procedural question before the motion.
Okay, I'll show.
So, and I, it sounds like we're deferring item eight?
I think the, the request is to defer item eight, but let's, let's do item seven.
But, yes, but just on the point of, for, for seven, so if we're coming back in a month or, or two weeks, or whatever the time is, to appoint members, I, you know, just given, I would, I would suggest that when we appoint, if we decide to appoint these extra members in May or June, that we give them, through June 30th of the next year, right? So we'll just appoint them for a month.
That makes sense.
That's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Wells, go ahead.
So we're deferring eight? We're not going to...
I think the, well, let's do seven, and then we'll get to eight. Let's do seven.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Climate Action Planning Committee and to amend their charge by adding two additional members.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Now, item eight. The appointments, my understanding is that there's a desire to defer on this item, is that correct, Mr. Doyle?
If we may, Mr. Chairman, yes, we would like to defer until your next meeting. We meet tomorrow night, and we now have a recommendation from the chamber for a designated to the committee. So we, as a committee, would have to approve the appointees that we would like to bring to you. It was not possible to have that done for this evening.
Great. All right. Anything further? Thank you, gentlemen. Always nice to see you, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be here.
And you as well, Alex.
Glad to be here.
He's a great chair. I want to say, if I may, in closing, that we started off with co-chairs. Tracy Dyke Redman was with Alex, co-chair, and she had to retire from the committee because of a change of position that she took that would avoid a conflict of interest. And Alex has taken over the chair and has been doing an admirable job.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. Back to item six, discussion update approval FY 2025 operating and capital budget. Mr. Milano or Ms. Bradley? Mr. Milano. Mr. Milano.[1629.04]
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the board is aware, the, we've gone through our process here. On setting the budget, the warrants have been sent out, so folks have that budget now, which is balanced using Governor Healy's recommended state aid figures. That's typically what we'll do as we go through this process. Just with the timing, by the time that the state budget progresses its way through its process, typically town meeting is kind of squared away on the budget already. However, timing this year is in our benefit, and we have more information than we did when we originally put the budget together. So the House of Representatives released their budget earlier this month and adjusted the state aid numbers, primarily Chapter 70 education aid to Milton's benefit and to many other communities' benefit. So I'll just walk through the numbers quickly and make a suggestion about how to incorporate these changes into the operating budget. So what I'm showing is the governor and house numbers. As you can see, for Chapter 70, which is education aid, general education aid to Milton, is now $12.1 million, which is a $318,000 increase over what the governor's budget projected for Milton. The reason for this change is that Milton is in the category of districts that receives new state aid at $30 per pupil on the governor's budget. When the House of Representatives put their budget together, they changed that to $104 per pupil. So that change, that increase of $318,000 is driven by the House of Representatives changing how they're going to apply the Chapter 70 formula for fiscal '25. There's an adjustment on the charter tuition reimbursement. Again, they incorporate updated information, so their number's a little more updated than the governor's. For education aid, we're talking about a net increase of $270,000. The house budget did, probably because they're increasing Chapter 70 aid, reduced our general government aid, which is just general aid that comes to Milton. So that was a $76,000 reduction. Overall, that means it's a 1% increase from fiscal '24 to '25. The Mass Municipal Association is currently lobbying the House of Representatives, requesting that that number be higher. I don't know how successful that might be, but potential more changes to come. But based on where the numbers are, we expect a reduction on where we were on general government aid. There's a small change on state-owned land. So overall, we have $190,000 in additional state aid coming to Milton. And the other piece of state aid is what the state charges us in assessments. And there is a reduction in our sending tuition for charter students. So we are saving $125,000 based on the house budget. And that nets out to an overall increase of aid to Milton of $316,000, as these numbers show here. So with the governor's budget, we are actually anticipating a net decrease year over year on state aid. With the house budget, that number is going back up, which is good to see. We're not seeing any of the Chapter 70 numbers that we saw in recent years, which is unfortunate. Hopefully, the state will be able to fund that at a higher clip next year. But for now, from where the house, from where the budget was going to town meeting originally, we now, we can now anticipate $316,000 more in state aid than we had at the time. And then the second piece of this is, should we spend it? So I am suggesting that we...
I didn't see that in the agenda. Did you? Should we spend it?
So as this board is aware, the school committee have been looking for additional support to the school budget. This is, you know, an increase on education aid. And the last request that we received from the school committee was an increase of $245,000. If the board is so inclined to support a recommendation, we would go to town, we would bring to the warrant committee an adjusted operating budget that reflects two changes, an increase to the school appropriation of $245,000, and a similar increase to the health insurance budget of $71,000 to account for any potential benefits with the additional staffing that could be hired with that additional funding. So we would anticipate utilizing all the new state aid money to those two purposes.
So just, Mr. Milano, so my understanding is the school committee meets tomorrow night.
Correct.
So if we and you recommend that this additional funding goes in that direction, then there is a possibility we could get a consensus from the school committee on that budget. And then you're going to also go in front of the warrant committee, I assume, at some point prior to town meeting?
Yes, I've alerted the warrant committee chair. He'll look to set up a meeting before town meeting. We're going to, in our discussions, we'll see what the logistics are like. But the idea would be to have that with a little bit of notice, so we can have everything prepared well in advance of town meeting, rather than doing it the night of town meeting.
Perhaps have a green sheet.
Have it ready to go for the first night of town meeting. The other thing I do want to mention is, as we're going through closing out our federal funding, ARPA money with the county, we are seeing an opportunity to potentially extend some funding, which would then be able to be utilized for previously approved money that was allocated for school needs. We'll have an opportunity to potentially extend that money into fiscal '25. So the benefits of the town will be beyond the $245,000 we're talking about here, but there is potential for additional ARPA funding for school positions in fiscal '25 that we're working through with the county now to extend previously approved projects beyond the June 30th deadline that the county has set.
Ms. Bradley.
So my question, Mr. Milano, is if you believe that the Senate is going to come in with the same numbers as the House, too?
I think that is an unknown.
Right.
Typically...
So what if we overshoot?
There is a risk. Typically, what we will see is the House and Senate will look for a place to increase local aid.
Correct.
But we're going with a little bit of trust that that will be the case. And if we are wrong, then we'll have to make an adjustment if that is, that's what happens.
Can I ask a follow-up?
It's possible we could be higher.
It could be, yeah. Have you heard anything from the delegation about where they think that, like, have you heard anything from Senator Timbly about what he's heard about whether or not the numbers will be the same, or from Representative Driscoll? Have you heard anything from them?
No, the only, the comments that we've heard to date have been that this is a challenging budget year.
Right.
And they're going to do the best they can. And I think, you know, I think it's a strong vote for cities and towns that the House released.
Right.
And I think holding on to that in and of itself will be a victory.
It's a huge, it's a huge thing. I mean, everybody that I've spoken to is having issues with their school budgets. So this is, this is great. I'm just concerned if we don't, if they don't make this money, if they don't meet this mark, which is a pretty high mark, what are our plans? Do we have a backup? Do we have Plan C?
So there's two elements to that. If town meeting appropriates it, that would be the budget, and that would be the forecast. So we would know going in, we'd either have to say, after a couple of months, see where our local receipts are, are other things coming in higher?
Okay.
Or if they're not, we would have to potentially reduce appropriations at a fall town meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Zull?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I just, I'm supportive of this, I think, because specifically, the money's increased based on school and school need and per pupil spending. I think it fits 100% with the idea of the House, and hopefully of the Senate as well. And magically, almost gets, you know, gets us a little past what the schools needed. So it would be great to create a consensus around this here, school committee and warrant committee, before town meeting. So I'm supportive of it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other comment. Mr. Wells?
So this one require a vote, right? Is it in the responsibility of the budget is Mr. Milano's?
So we, well, we voted to support Mr. Milano's prior budget. So it seems to me if we want to support this, it's the warrant committee's budget. Mr. Milano makes a recognition of the warrant committee. But we can support Mr. Milano's recommendation to the warrant committee.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair. I just want to see if you want to one. So now I'm...
I'll second.
Right. So the motion is to support the town administrator's recommendation for revised budget. And the motion's been made and seconded. Any further, Mr. Wells?
I just want to thank, I had multiple conversations with Chair Carroll and also a member, Mark Ouring. And as you know, this was a very tough thing. And for them, especially for Mark, this is a new experience for him. And Chair Carroll sits on Capitol with me. And, you know, as you know, we went through like a long exercise a couple of weeks ago. And I'm very pleased. I know how passionate she is and how much she cares about this. And so I'm glad. I had a feeling that something, somewhere, I wasn't sure what tree it was. I know we've talked about several different trees in this room recently. I had a feeling it would come from some tree. And I did know from Representative Driscoll that, as Mr. Milano's, it seems that both the House and the Senate are strongly committed to, you know, local cities and towns. And it's a benefit to us, as we're reading. So thank you for that. And thank you to them for all their hard work as well.
We've been able to get to consensus 12 out of the 13 years that I've been doing it. And I always say it's bubble gum and chicken wire.
You're exactly right.
You figure it out, you figure it out, you know, you have a different piece of bubble gum.
I say paper cups.
So, yeah. So hopefully, you know, we don't want to get out in front of our skis. Hopefully, the school committee and the warrant committee will see the benefit of it. But I guess that remains to be seen. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right.
Call them on the phone.
Item 6A, Mr. Milano, is it? Mr. Milano, on the ARPA projects for Lower Guile Turf Field.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I alluded to a few minutes ago, Norfolk County has had a deadline on its ARPA projects of June 30th of '24. The way the federal rules around the ARPA funding work is that it has to be obligated or contracted by the end of this calendar year. It has to be spent down by the end of calendar year '26. So the money doesn't have to be spent this year, but it does have to be obligated. The county's on a slightly different timeline because since the money's flowing through them, they want to be able to reallocate money if cities and towns in Norfolk County aren't going to use their share. So they've moved the timelines up so that if Milton's not going to use $100,000, they can go give and need them. Now, we don't want to be in a position of doing that. So we're trying a bit of work with the county to draw down any potential money. If there's any allocated or unspent money in some of the projects that have been approved, make sure that we use that up. Which brings us to the Lower Guile Turf Field, which as, as it's gone through the permitting process, we have been held up through permitting process at the Conservation Commission. And now through an appeal to the Mass Department of Environmental Protection for a superseding order of conditions. That superseding order hasn't been issued yet, which has meant the project is unable to move forward into bidding, into contracting, into construction. And since it remains an unknown, we're starting to run up into timelines, issues with the county. It remains possible that we could get a superseding order of conditions, the project could move forward, and we remain on track to utilize the ARPA funding within the county's rules without a major issue. There is a chance that that won't happen. And we could be looking in July, August, and not having, able to move the project forward. Norfolk County's starting to get nervous about that allocated money, that it's not going to get obligated in time for either Milton to use it or somebody else to use it. So the solutions here would be, the options as I see them are, you know, move forward as is and anticipate a superseding order of conditions and moving into bidding, contracting, construction ASAP. The other option would be to replace the ARPA allocation for this project with town funds. This is a $2.4 million budgeted project. $1.6 million has been approved for borrowing. $400,000 has been approved for free cash. Those are both at the '22 annual town meeting. And then the last portion of funding is $400,000 from ARPA. So the options for appropriation locally would be, it has to be a town meeting vote. It could be at this town meeting to replace that $400,000 in ARPA funding by increasing the borrowing authorization. It could be at a fall town meeting if by the time we get through permitting, that's where it puts us. It's just, since we don't know when these approvals will come down and when the project will get going, when that appropriation is available is kind of a factor in determining whether the project could move forward right away. So, you know, my thought is that if we want to guarantee that this funding is in place and there's no risk to that, then the prudent course would be to bring it to this town meeting under Article 4, the capital budget article, to increase that authorization. I know we're a couple of weeks out of town meeting, but I just, I just wanted to put that on folks' radar as it's an unknown right now. And it's an important project to folks in town. And so if we want to make sure it's able to move forward right away, then this might be what needs to be done. We've been talking internally. I haven't engaged with the park commissioners on it. I haven't engaged with the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
You haven't, are you?
I have not. I've talked to the parks department. But so that's where it is now at this point. And so that's, that's my update. Happy to take any questions or get any thoughts.
And just to be clear, so if we, if we, if we don't want to risk losing the ARPA money, then, and we increase the borrowing authorization, then we would reallocate the $400,000 ARPA money for some other project?
Some other eligible expense, correct.
And do you have, do you have that, something in mind for that?
The easiest thing under the ARPA formula and rules is to go to water and sewer infrastructure. You know, we have a water project going up to bid in the next couple of weeks. We have a sewer project that just went out to bid, that's contracted, that's beginning. So there are projects there that the money could be pushed to that would save the town money. But we have already used a lot of ARPA money on water and sewer infrastructure. It's just in terms of what's quickest, fastest, and easiest, those would be the first answer. There are other potential capital-type projects that might be possible, but it takes a little bit more negotiating and discussing with the county.
We don't need to make that decision tonight.
Correct.
Okay. Other comments, comments or questions? Mr. Wells?
So we'll schedule a Capitol meeting to talk about this sooner versus later, like this week?
Yeah. If it was going to be, correct, if it's going to be an updated Capitol article, then it should go to Capitol. It's just in terms of trying to get the ball rolling, I wanted to check in with this board first.
So I'll do that, Mr. Chair. I'll schedule that next week.
Mr. Zull?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think anybody that has a kid that plays soccer, or football, or lacrosse, or field hockey, or you name the outdoor sport, knows that almost every other town has fields like this that are in better shape, that don't get closed all the time. All the soccer kids had to get, lost a game this past weekend because of the rain. There's two weekends in a row that we've lost games. So, you know, the need for this field and for our kids to be able to play is extraordinary. How realistic is it that this would be denied, given that so many other towns across the Commonwealth have fields like this?
You mean for the ARPA funding or for at town meeting?
No.
For at the EPA? Oh, DEP. So I don't have a good answer on that. I think typically, they apply, they look at the science and apply it, the Wetlands Protection Act. And typically, they'll, it would be orders of conditions that are issued by the conservation commissions, like this one has an order of conditions that typically held up at a superseding order level.
Okay. So we should anticipate that it should be?
I think we are confident that it'll get approved.
Okay.
It's not so much about getting approved. I think it's more the timeline of when that comes down.
Understood.
Is the concern.
It's really unfortunate that it's taken us so long to get this, that we're losing this kind of, you know, important funding for something that our kids need so, so badly.
Agreed.
This is a question. Oh, sorry, Mr. Wells. Go ahead.
I just had a question. If, so if Member Wells does a Capitol committee meeting this week or early next week, whenever, what is the next step? Do we have to meet again? Does the finance committee? I don't think the finance committee needs to meet. I just wanted to know procedurally what the next step is.
So it'd be Capitol, Select Board, and then it goes to warrant committee and at town meeting.
Okay.
Well, and the goal would be, on this one as well, is to get a green sheet prior to town meeting. And so that's, so this board should probably take it up next week after Capitol.
Agree.
We don't need to meet, though.
No, we don't need to meet. But my...
So the way I would see it is, unless if I'm correct, if the schedule's right, Capitol meets Thursday, approves it, night one of town meeting, Select Board meeting, votes and approves it, we have a green sheet going into night one of town meeting. Do I got that right?
You could have a meeting next week.
You could have a...
The Select Board, and then have the green sheet prior to the first night of town meeting.
So if we met at 7:30, maybe a morning meeting on Thursday right afterwards? Is that, would that be?
We've missed the posting for Thursday. It would have to be Friday at the absolute earliest after business hours are open. And then more like, for flexibility, early next week, most likely.
What days today? We missed the post. Next Thursday? For a week from Thursday?
Oh, sorry, for a week. I was thinking Thursday in two days.
I meant next Thursday. I mean, there's enough going on. I was thinking next Wednesday.
Okay. We can connect.
Unless you really want to do it for...
No, no, I was, I just assumed that's what you meant.
There will be a meeting in the board on the Wednesday evening.
Right.
So you can take it up.
So I can't do Friday. I can't. This week, I'm screwed.
Okay. I'll connect to the end. We can pull the members. And like I said, it is quite conceivable, and the county has been more than understanding around the timeline, and they're not holding us to June 30th. The question is if it's July 30th, August 30th, at what point do they say, you got to use it on something else because, or give it back to us? And that's not, we're not giving it back to them to be used elsewhere, so we're going to use it. Just, that is, that is the risk, is the timeline around it all.
I have a few hours of besting this project. I'm familiar.
So, I mean, this board could act, but it's probably better to have the Capitol Committee act prior to...
I'd want to talk to Amy and just make sure, I'm sure Nick already is, but that's...
All right. Anything else on this? Or anything else on item seven? Or item seven, I'm sorry, item six, or item 6A. Back to item nine, which is discussion update approval. This is for the...
Town meeting articles.
Town meeting articles. Is anything that we have on this pressing, Mr. Milano, or is there anything?
No, I put it on here in case the board had any interest in discussing any of the articles. The warrant is on the website. If you haven't received it in the mail, please let me know. It was put in the mail on April 15th and taken much longer this time than it has any previous time. So I apologize for that.
A lot of printing being done. A lot of printing being done this year.
May I ask a question about that?
Mr. Ms. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you. Mr. Milano, if there, are there extra copies at town hall?
Yes, we had some made. We don't have them yet, but...
Okay. So people that were supposed to receive them, so I assume town meeting members?
Yeah, we have a lot printed for this town meeting because there might be turnover as well among the members. So we are bringing extras on night one.
Great. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair?
It's available online.
Correct. So we don't have to kill the trees.
So if folks are curious, they can look at it right now.
Yes, the warrant is on the town, we've set up a town 2024 annual town meeting landing page. The warrant is currently up there. And as presentations and information are prepared for town meeting, that information will also be posted on that webpage. So please do check back on it occasionally to see if any new information, such as something about the local historic district study committee, or potential green sheets, will also be posted there as we approach town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Milano.
Anything further on this? Item 10, discussion approval MBTA Community Act status and issues. Item 10A, I don't know that there's anything non-executive session in terms of an update. Item B, we do have proposed letters to the governor, Lieutenant Governor, Boston MPO, and the HLC, Housing Livable Communities. The reason for the delay, they have now been reviewed and approved by special counsel and town counsel, with one suggested, if we want to take them up, one suggested add to each of them. And that is adding, if the town were to prevail in litigation, particularly with respect to its challenge to the guidelines as ultra virus, the action described above would unquestionably be unfair. So that would be one add to the letters. So that would be one add to the letters, if we want to take action on them this evening.
Sure. Oh, sorry.
Sure. Yeah, sure. This is hot off the press. If the town were to prevail in the litigation, particularly, and this would go into kind of the main paragraph, if the town were to prevail in litigation, particularly with respect to its challenge to the guidelines as ultra virus, the action described above would unquestionably be unfair, and that action would be, was the withdrawal of funding or the penalty from the Boston MPO on the tip funding.
So it would be motion approved, subject to include the edits?
Yes, that one edit, yes. Subject to include the edit. And I think there's one add we need to make on the caption, the caption for the attorney general's. Ms. Musto?
Thank you. When did we get these?
This afternoon.
Oh, these? Yeah, these came this afternoon.
Yeah. And so we can defer on them.
Well, no, I mean, I think if we want to, but I mean, do you have, are we going to put them up there or for it to look at?
Yeah, do you have that, Nick?
I'm pulling them up now. Give me one moment.
It would just be helpful.
Yeah. And we just heard from town council, so...
I mean, I think it sounds like a good idea. I just want to read it quickly.
Yeah. Okay. It was, as we discussed before, asking each of the, the Seaport Economic Council, governor, lieutenant governor, HLC, and Boston MPO, asking them, asking them, making clear that the fair and reasonable course here would be not to impose any penalty or withdrawal of funding until at least three months after a decision. And as the add says...
That you just read, yeah.
Is, if we win, it's particularly unfair to do it now. So we would add that, we would add that...
Does he know where he wants to put it?
Right.
Well, no, he was, he just, he kind of left it to me, but he just, I think it would go...
Probably right there.
I think it would go right there, right there at the end.
Before "thank you."
Yes, before "thank you."
So I'd make that motion, subject edit.
I got a question.
Ms. Brett?
Sorry.
Sorry. So this is great, except what if we lose and they end up giving us this money? Then what do we do? And we've already got projects started by, with this money. Then what happens?
They haven't imposed a penalty on us.
No, 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 no. You're asking them to give us this money.
Right.
And if we win the lawsuit, yippee skippy. They should have given it to us anyways. If we lose the lawsuit and we've started using this money, how do we repay it?
Yippee skippy because they haven't taken it away from us. They don't take it away from, the idea is they don't take it away from us until we are found, not, and we are found by the court to have been in error.
But one of these, specifically, we received a letter saying that it was subject to the approval of the MBTA communities.
Right.
So rectify that in my mind. If it's subject to the approval of that MBTA communities, how is it that now we think that we are owed that money, even if they've already told us that it was subject to that vote?
Because the, well, the theory and the idea in the letter is, it is in court. The attorney general has said not to impose any penalty until three months after an injunction. So we're saying, if you want to be consistent with the attorney general, then you should wait at least until three months after if we lost. If we win, we shouldn't have been, we shouldn't have been penalized anyway. So we shouldn't be penalized, if we're going to be penalized. At the very least, it shouldn't be until three months after.
Even though we knew about this prior to taking the vote? We as a town knew about this?
No, we didn't. This was not...
No, they gave us a letter saying that, no, they absolutely did, saying that it's subject to the approval. We absolutely have that letter, right?
Understood.
Okay.
Understood.
So on this letter specifically, we received a letter prior to the vote of our town that said that this amount was subject to the vote, correct?
That's correct.
And now we're saying, yeah, we heard you, but we want to change it and we want to be okay with what the attorney general says? I'm just confused.
So I think, what I intend to say, and what I think we're saying is, let's all be consistent. The attorney general says, don't impose a penalty until three months after an injunction imposed by the court, if an injunction is imposed. So if the executive branch wants to be consistent with the attorney general, which I think is only fair, then the executive branch would take the same view. The executive branch can change their view. They don't, they don't have to say, well, we said it was going to be this way, and so we're going to keep it this way. The executive branch could say, yeah, you're right. It seems fair that the attorney general isn't going to, doesn't think it should be imposed until three months after. We'll take the same view. So it's just, it's a request for consistency among the different constitutional offices. Mr. Zoll?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Speaking of consistency, members of this body and many of the folks on the no campaign gleefully pointed out that we would be losing money from the state, but not that much. And it was determined that that was a small price to pay for the glorious revolution or whatever it was to ignore state law and get sued by the attorney general. So I find it a little bit of trying to have your cake and eat it too by sending these letters in when we knew that this was the cost of voting no. We knew what the costs were. And we, I was derided for pointing out that it was very clear that these were the costs. We knew that this was going to happen. And, you know, I have to take a different approach from you. I feel like this is, you know, if my kid breaks a rule and then they say, well, you know, I shouldn't have to suffer the consequences for breaking this rule because I didn't know that, you know, you were serious about taking my cell phone away, but you're really serious about it, and now I, you know, I feel like I need to appeal that decision. We knew what the consequences were. And I feel like, you know, the chances of this being considered are zero. We've already tarnished this town's reputation by our actions. And now we're, the same people that are, had made the case that this was the cost of freedom are now saying, well, we actually don't want to pay that cost because, you know, we didn't realize it was actually going to impact the town, even though we were told by the governor, by the lieutenant governor, by the attorney general, by the legislature when they passed this bill, that we were going to pay this cost. So I would not sign this. I will not vote to approve it. I think it's, I think it's another fool's errand in the litany of fool's errands that is this quest to have your cake and eat it too. I think it's, I think it's wrong, and I won't be voting for it, and I won't say anymore about it because I know we want to try to have shorter meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. The only thing I would suggest is, what has changed is the view of the attorney general on this. And so, so it seems to me we have a fair and reasonable ask here, that since the attorney general has taken this view, that no penalty should be imposed until three months after a decision, it's only, it's fair and reasonable to ask all of the town actors to take that same view. So that's my view of what has changed, and that's the attorney general's request. So that's, that's my view. Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I also agree that we're trying to mirror what was in that information that the attorney general provided, when she said the penalty and withholding off for three months on it. So I think it would be prudent to, consistency to do this and to send off these letters. And, you know, again, we've hired an attorney to help us with some of these matters, and, you know, again, I'm not going to go into all the details because we shouldn't be going into it here, but state law versus all of these things that Mr. Zoll said, I mean, we have an attorney who's guiding us on all of this. He has reviewed these and has guided us that he thinks that this is a good idea, I suppose, if he's added, well, he's added a wording in.
Yeah, no, let me just, let me be clear. The request was to make sure this is okay, to make sure there's nothing, that this won't compromise the litigation. And the answer, the answer was that it wouldn't, that it wouldn't. That was the, that was...
The attorney did not suggest we send these.
No, that was my...
Correct.
That was our discussion.
So let's just be clear about what the attorney is asking us to do.
And so, not to, not to, again, just for clarity, and so the response was, there's no issue with sending them, and here's a suggestion. And that was that one suggestion. That was the, that was the idea. So, Ms. Musto?
Okay, so for clarification, Mr. Chair, it sounds like he did see these letters, though.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And he didn't say we should not send them?
He didn't say we should not send them. That's right.
Okay, thank you.
That's exactly right. He signed off on it. Look, here's the thing. When you're involved in litigation, you want to make sure your lawyer knows everything you're doing. You don't do anything without telling your lawyer. So we told our lawyer, we said, is it okay to do this? He said, yes. And here's a suggested add. That's, that's the takeaway.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zoll? Just a quick request, too. We need to be keeping count of how much this is costing the town. These costs, these legal fees, this is, the no campaign needs a bill for how much we're spending on this, because it's ridiculous, how much funding we've lost, we're paying an attorney $900 an hour because we want to make sure that we have the best attorneys. Like, these are real costs for the town, and the way that this was described was that these would be insignificant and nothing's happened, and now we're sending these letters. So I just want to point out, anybody who says that they're fiscally responsible should really be looking very closely at this, how much money the town is spending on this, and something that we are very sure, lots of us are very sure, that is, has very little chance of winning. So that's, that's just it, Mr. Chair. I think as we talk about attorneys, looking at things, the fees that are being racked up, it's important to keep in mind, every time we're doing something like this, it costs the town money.
And it's a fair point, Mr. Zoll. The only thing I'd point out on this one is, this is part of the fixed fee. So there's no additional cost other than the fixed fee on this one. But absolutely, everyone in town is going to know what the costs were, but this is no additional cost. This is just a part of the fixed fee. Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I'm hearing a lot from Mr. Zoll about the no campaign is responsible, the no, that people have voted no, they're responsible for this, they're responsible for that. This was a town-wide referendum. These are members of the community. These are every neighbor in the community. So when you're saying that, you're really singling out people in our community. This was a community referendum vote, and I think we need to respect that. And if we're talking about leaving, you know, this is costing us a lot of money, let's be honest, we left 2.5 million on the table for a new animal shelter that we could have had, too. So, and we've had many things that this town has fought for that were right. We've litigated many things that we felt were noble causes. And so I don't like this insinuation that a certain group should be tagged with a certain cost. These are your residents in this town. I think it's pretty offensive. Thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Mr. Chair, so to Vala, I'm not going to, I've said this many times, we represent all the citizens in this town. We do. And you just, you have the right to speak, you know, to assume that someone's not fiscally responsible because of the way they voted. It's just not correct. And I could say a lot of things I'm not. Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we support, support the request, support sending the letters, subject to the edits, as you made specific reference to tonight. And that's all I'm going to say about it at this point.
I'll second.
So, and just as a friendly member, just a motion to...
Send the letters.
Approve it, send the letters, sign and approve it.
Sign and approve the letters, yes, subject edit.
All right, motions been made in the second. Any...
I have a question.
Ms. Brett?
Is this going to be our names listed underneath, or is it going to be just you as the chair? Sometimes we sign it where it's just you as the chair. Sometimes we don't have our names listed underneath. I'm just trying to get a sense of where that is at.
So our practice has been, this year...
Right, that the majority rules, I get that.
To list the names, to list the names, I think.
On everything?
I think we have...
So the way it's usually is signed by Chair Michael Zulus on behalf of the Milton Select Board with the names listed.
Listed underneath?
Definitely, but no signatures associated.
No signatures.
Right, that's exactly right. The way it is there, that's the way we've been doing it. It's done different times, different years.
I was just curious.
But that's the way we've been doing it this year. So, but that's not a, that's, some years, some letters, some years everyone signs it, some years, you know, we've done it different ways, it seems, over the years. That's just the way we've done it this year. Ms. Zoll?
Just want to respond quickly to Ms. Musto's point. Like, of course, I understand that we represent everybody. There are a lot of people in this town that voted yes. There are a lot of people in this town that voted no. I understand that. I respect the decision. I have not tried to interfere with this process at all. What I'm simply pointing out is that some of the leaders of the no campaign made promises around the financial impact of this, of their vote, that were not true. They weren't true. And so all I'm doing is just pointing that out. I'm not singling anybody out by name. I'm not throwing any fireballs. I'm not saying anything that I didn't say on February 12th. The allegations and the insinuations about what this was going to cost the town by the no campaign were false, and we're paying the cost for that now. That's all I'm saying. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm ready to vote.
Ms. Musto?
Okay, I think we should just move forward, but I'm, Mr. Chair, but I'm not going to sit here and listen to a member say something that is very biased. Okay? So I, I think you're insinuating that one side said falsehoods, another one didn't present it correctly, or whatever. I think that's wrong. We don't do that to our residents. We don't do that to people. And I think that you obviously have an opinion, and that's fine. That's your personal opinion. But don't start making accusations, I would caution you about making accusations about people that were running either campaign.
I duly cautioned.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Motion's been made, second hall is in favor.
Aye.
All is opposed? 3-2. Okay. Item, item 11, discussion approval contract with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for an economic development plan. Is this Mr. Milano?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We received an earmark in a state economic development bill to be used on economic development and economic development planning. We had discussed this at the select board some time ago now, and have been working since then to secure services on an economic development plan. The intention behind the plan is to engage with residents, with business community, on economic growth, and we're talking here, business and commercial growth. Housing is a whole topic that will be dealt with in other planning initiatives. This is a planning initiative specifically around business growth and commercial growth in Milton, to gauge people's temperature on it, see if there is interest. If there is interest, what kind of business or commercial growth would folks be interested in, and if so, where? There will be numerous community focus groups, a community-wide survey, community-wide meetings, engaging around East Milton, Granite Ave, Milton Village, and Central Ave, as our currently kind of existing business districts, but also open to looking at other places in town where folks might think some commercial growth might be beneficial. The cost is just under $100,000, driven because of the numerous public engagement sessions. That's what's driving the cost here. But we've been working with MAPC to prepare that. The full proposal is in the packet. If the board's supportive, we'll go ahead and get that executed and put this state funding to work.
Comments or questions? Or motions?
You want to make a motion? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Roxanne.
Go ahead.
Were you raising your hand?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, just jumped, I make a motion to approve the contract with MAPC for an economic development plan.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, item 12, Proclamations for Earth Day and Arbor Day.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
We have them, we have them.
At least for the purpose of discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation celebrating Earth Day and Arbor Day.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Do we, I mean, do we want to read the proclamations? They're not that long.
Let's read them.
All right, all right. Does anyone have a, does anyone like to read them? I mean, I can do it.
If you do, I'll do one.
You want to do Arbor Day?
Sure.
All right.
And I didn't bring cheetos tonight. I can't read that, there's no way.
Oh, you can't?
You want my cheetos? 125.
Oh, yeah, that'll work, I'll do it.
Oh, I can't wait to see this. Give them, give them.
Got to get the progressive lenses.
It's okay, they're Kate Spade, they'll look great on you.
So, whereas, in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas, trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing erosion of our precision topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas, trees are as renewable resource, giving the paper wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood projects, and whereas, trees increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy, spiritual, and all. And now, therefore, we, the Milton Select Board, do proclaim, April 26, 2024, is Arbor Day in the town of Milton. We urge all residents of Milton to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, encourage citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart, promote the well-being of this and future generations. Given this day, April 23, 2024, signed by the Chair on behalf of the Board, Michael F. Zulus, Chair, Aaron G. Bradley, Vice Chair, Roxanne F. Musto, Secretary, Richard G. Wells, Jr., there's a typo there in that one, member, and Benjamin D. Zoll, member.
No, I need those, because I got to go next.
What was the typo?
It's Wells.
Missfolds Wells.
Just a my name.
It's his name.
Really?
Yep, there's an S.
If we could just cure all the Wells of this community with the proclamation, it would be...
And the sharing of glasses, Mr. Wells.
Okay, my turn. Earth Day proclamation. Whereas, the first Earth Day was enacted in 1970 and engaged over 20 million Americans to advocate for a cleaner environment. And whereas, Earth Day now has become a worldwide event and has highlighted some of the most critical environmental issues on the world stage. And whereas, Milton is blessed with a wealth of bountiful woodlands and waterways, often most visibly showcased in the Blue Hills Reservation, as well as our parks and riverside walking paths. And whereas, Milton supports projects that demonstrate and encourage energy conservation, sustainability, and the usage of renewable energy. And whereas, the town of Milton challenges every resident, we're challenging all of you, to help in conserving and protecting the environment via green activities such as recycling, water and energy conservation, tree planting, as Mr. Wells just spoke about, and active education about environmental issues. And whereas, this year, Earth Day will celebrate its 54th anniversary of promoting the value of our planet and respect for all who live in it. Now, therefore, we, the Milton Select Board, do hereby proclaim Monday, April 22, 2024, through Friday, April 26, 2024, as Earth Week in the town of Milton, and urge all citizens of Milton to join us in efforts to help protect and preserve our environment for ours and future generations. Given this day, Tuesday, April 23, 2024, signed by the Chair on behalf of the Select Board, Michael F. Zulus, Chair, Aaron G. Bradley, Vice Chair, Roxanne F. Musto, Secretary, Richard G. Wells, Typo, Junior Member, and Benjamin D. Zoll, Member.
All right, we have a motion to approve them. Did we already do that?
She's...
Yeah.
No, we already did it.
All is in favor?
Yeah, aye, aye. We did that.
We did.
All right, great, thank you. Item 13, Discussion Approval Proclamation Honoring the Centennial Celebration of President George H. W. Bush.
Wow.
And I apologize because I have a, Lynn, I have a whereas clause that I added just to make it clear about the centennial celebration, so I'll make a suggestion on the whereas clause. So, the George and Barbara Bush Foundation contacted the town about the centennial celebration that is going to be taking place at the Bush Presidential Library on June 11, 12, and 13. And wanted to know what they could do to complement any celebration that might take place in Milton for that. So we have a proposed proclamation that we can send down for the celebration down in College Station, Texas. So that will be on display if we do that. And this one I can read because I'll add one whereas clause, just to, I think, fill in about the centennial proclamation. So, this is a proclamation, whereas George Herbert Walker Bush was born on June 12, 1924, at 173 Adams Street in Milton, Massachusetts. He was the second son of Prescott Bush and Dorothy Bush, and brother to Prescott, Nancy, Jonathan, and William. The Bush family then settled in Greenwich, Connecticut. And whereas, on his 18th birthday, President Bush enlisted in the United States Navy as an aviator. He was commissioned as an ensign in 1943 and promoted to Lieutenant, junior grade the following year. His squadron was assigned to the USS San Jacinto as a member of Air Group 51. President Bush was awarded the Distinguished Flying Cross for his role in the mission in Chikijima in 1944. And whereas, President Bush met Ms. Barbara Pierce at a Christmas dance in 1941. While on leave from the Navy, they married, he was on leave from the Navy, they married on January 6, 1945, in Rye, New York. They were married for 73 years and were the proud parents of George, Robin, Jeb, Neil, Marvin, and Dorothy. And whereas, President Bush's career in public service continued to flourish, he was elected to the United States, U.S. House of Representatives from Texas 7th Congressional District, and was later appointed by President Richard Nixon as the U.S. Ambassador to the United Nations. He also served as the Chief of the U.S. Liaison Office in the People's Republic of China, Chair of the Republican National Committee, and Director of Central Intelligence Agency. And whereas, in 1980, President Bush was chosen as President Ronald Reagan's running mate for the Republican Party. He faithfully served as Vice President of the United States of America from 1981 through 1989. And whereas, on January 20, 1989, George H. W. Bush took the oath of office as the 41st President of the United States. President Bush and his administration led a successful geopolitical transition and addressed economic challenges that laid the foundation for future growth and prosperity. And this is my ad, whereas, the George and Barbara Bush Foundation is celebrating the life and legacy of our 41st President in this, the 100th anniversary of his birth, in a centennial celebration at the Bush Presidential Library on June 11, 12, and 13, 2024. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Select Board of Milton, honor the legacy of President George H. W. Bush during the centennial celebration. So that is a rather bit longer proclamation. Mr. Wells.
So he's actually, was appointed as an honorary member of the Police Department in 1990, which was the centennial of the Milton Police Department. And that's over there, and that, if you ever been on the lobby, there's a whole case to him.
Yeah, that's right, there is a case to his thing. We could actually add that.
We could probably, I think we should probably add that, that in, I don't know what month, it's in there, I think it's August.
We can add it, we can add it.
It was definitely in 1990, that was the centennial year of the Milton Police Department. He was appointed by, he was appointed by the Select Board then, as an honorary member. Sorry, Mr. Zoll.
No, that's fine, only when you're finished.
No, I'm good.
Mr. Chair, occurs to me, so if they're, they're looking for maybe ways to honor him, I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to, at some point during the festival that we have on Hutchinson Field, which is, of course, like, right next to where he was born, we could have a member of the Select Board maybe read that proclamation at some point, maybe early in the day.
I can arrange that for you. I was actually thinking, I wish, because you said the date, it's the following week, that maybe, maybe we dedicate the fireworks in his, or something to see there, like, I'm just, I'm...
It'll be prior to his birthday. His birthday is the 24th, so it'll be prior to his birthday.
No, his birthday's the 12th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The 12th, yes, the 12th. But it's okay, I agree, I agree with Ms. Zoll. I think, I think we can do something like that.
And then when we send it through, we could let them know.
Right, and actually probably send a video.
Yeah, I could do that, too.
Send a video, that would be nice, that'd be nice. Okay. All right, so, motion on the proclamation?
I'll make a motion to accept the proclamation as amended, and...
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Item 14, Discussion Approval Donation from Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center to the Milton Coalition in the amount of $15,000.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the donation of $15,000 from the D.I. Deaconess Medical Center to the Milton Coalition.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I was waiting for Roxanne.
Oh, do you...
Well, I'm an employee under the Beth Israel umbrella, so I'm going to abstain.
You'll abstain, okay.
Yes.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and one abstentions, 401. Item 15, Meeting Minutes from March 12, March 26, and April 2.
Mr. Chair, just before we make the motion, I wasn't present at the April 2, so we'll have to break it up so that I can abstain from that.
So given that, which one did you say, Mr. Zoll, which one?
April 2. April 2. So I'll make a motion to approve the amended meeting minutes from March 12 and March 26.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the meeting minutes for April 2, 2024.
I'll second, but I have an adjustment that I wanted to read.
Do you want to make it? Oh, okay.
Well, I don't know if we want to...
All right.
Sure, motion's been made and seconded, and with a proposed amendment for which minutes?
On the 2nd.
Oh, April 2, oh, that's what we're talking about.
Because we took that out separately, correct?
Yes, right, right.
Yeah. So, let me find it here. Under, on page 3, under letter B, Engagement and Fee Agreement.
Hold on, April 2. April 2. So this is item which, I'm sorry.
Item B.
Item B. What's the number, is there a number?
Page 3.
Oh, page 3.
It's...
Oh, I get it, I get it, yep, I got it.
Okay.
Yep.
So, there's a thing that said, Ms. Musto, offer a suggestion, so I'm going to tell you what the suggestion was.
Okay.
Under B, the last two lines.
Yep.
So, what I wanted to put in there in place of it was to strike that, following the vote, Ms. Musto, Ms. Bradley, that line there. And instead, I was going to put in, Ms. Musto had expressed her concerns of Ms. Bradley continuing to abstain regarding the hiring of attorneys to represent the town of Milton regarding the MBTA lawsuit, and not taking a vote of yes or no, and exchange regarding voting abstentions followed.
All right, so that's a proposed amendment to April 2. I might suggest, it's a little bit of a long amendment, do we want to defer on that?
Yeah, let's defer.
Do you want to defer, is that okay?
That's fine, we can defer, Chair.
Mr. Chair, while if we're looking at that one, too, I wasn't there, but the way that Article 5 reads, it says, Ms. Bradley and Mr. Zoll agreed that FY 2025 capital operational budgets are not modified. It sounds like I was there, even though it says of the top 5 was absent.
Right.
So it may be...
We'll make that revision.
We should figure that out.
Lynn, do you have that one as well? It might have been, they might have been referring to...
I'm sure that's what it was.
I'm sure I was.
It would be good to just make sure that that was clear.
Okay, so we'll amend, we'll have a red line on those minutes for the next meetings.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Item 16, Town Administrator's Report.
Was not prepared to add much this evening on that.
Okay, that's fine. Don't feel compelled.
You'll be penalized, there's no penalty.
All right, is that it?
He yields back his minutes to you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Zoll reminded me that Footloose is coming up this weekend.
Yes.
We were looking at tickets the other day for my family. So, I think it's Friday at 7:00, Saturday at 2:00, Saturday at 7:00, Sunday at 2:00.
Sunday at 2:00, yes.
That's, I'll cede my time to any other members.
Ms. Musto.
And there's also on Sunday, Light the Way.
Sunday night.
Sunday night at the gazebo at 6:30.
6 o'clock, 6:30?
I think it's 6:30, I believe.
That's right.
Yeah, I believe it's at 6:30.
It's Milton Coalition.
Milton Coalition, yes.
Yep. My wife will be there. I may, my wife will definitely be there.
One other thing, too, Mr. Chair, since we're at tonight, it's the second night, as both probably know, Passover, and I think we should wish very blessed Passover to Rabbi and all of our Jewish residents. I was very honored last night to attend my first ever Seder dinner, my wife and I, at the Cohen family in Newton. It's quite, 30-something people there, it's quite an event. Even though I've been exposed pretty much to a lot of Hebrew and Jewish customs from my time in Israel, and since I've returned here, that Seder dinner was quite something. It's actually unique, that in many homes, it's repeated, it's a two-night, you do it once, and then you repeat it again tonight with a totally different cast, so. Happy Passover to everyone of Jewish faith, especially in my community who's celebrating this week.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Item, are we all set with item 16, Mr. Milano?
Yes.
Item 17, Chair's Report. The only thing that I have is, the Milton Fire Department had a busy weekend, a total of 40 incidents over the weekend, including three fires. One was a fire at Steel and Rye Restaurant on Saturday that brought a response, a needed response, and a very important response from the fire department. Also on Saturday, there was a trash floor on the second floor, trash fire on the second floor of a residence, again, responded to by the fire department. And on Sunday, there was a, another fire at a residence in a second-floor bedroom, again, responded to by the fire department. So a very busy weekend, and a very, very important response, and shows once again the valor and the importance of our firefighters in our, in this community, and the fact that they had 40 incidents, including three fires, over the course of a weekend, shows how vital they are in our community. So, thank you to the fire department and all the brave men and women who work for us in the fire department. That's all I have. Public comment, response? Item 18?
We're good, we did it.
Item 19, Future Meeting Dates. There's organizational meeting next, a week from Wednesday night, and then the town meeting dates. And then future agenda items, we don't, I mean, we don't have anything, I don't think, on there. Mr. Milano, do we, do we need all of the executive, I mean, do we need all of the executive session items that are listed?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, and I believe we may come back into open session. Oh, wait a minute, no, I guess we won't.
Yeah.
We might come back into open session on 1. Item 26, but maybe not. No, we could, this could...
Do you want to do that?
That could go back into open session later. It doesn't have to be done. That can be, it can be, yeah, doesn't have to be done. All right, so I will move, pardon me, to enter into executive session for discussion regarding strategy with respect to litigation filed by the Attorney General of the Town of Milton. Based on my belief that the discussion of the matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board, the Select Board will not return to open session.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This is a roll call vote.[1577.04] Motion's been made and seconded. This is a roll call vote. All is in favor? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus, yes. I move into adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to current contract negotiations with non-union personnel based on my belief, non-union personnel, that's the town administrator.
Aye.
That's, okay, all right.
That's one, okay.
No, no, I understand. I understand. The town administrator, based on my, the non-union personnel, the town administrator, based on my belief, the discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position, the Select Board, the Select Board will not return to open session.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Oh.
No, you're right, you're right.
Ms. Bradley, Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus, yes. And I will move to adjourn from open session, enter into executive session to review and approve executive session minutes dated as listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
And the Board will not return to open session, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it was my, the Board will not return to open session. All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus, yes. Let's see. Okay.
24?
Yeah.
Oh, 22.
I just said that.
I'm sorry, 23.
I think those have broken up.
You did 23, you did 23, 24?
I did that. I think we've got to combine all of the executive session review because we're not going to release, this is, because we haven't approved them. We need to approve them first.
So, 25, 26.
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Mr. Milano?
This one where it says, "On the agenda, review, release." We did receive a request for those. So, the Board does need to consider the release of those. And this is item 23 on the agenda. Perhaps it's listed separately on the, differently on the prepared motions.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, I mean, I guess if the Board wants to, it can. I mean, many times we'll...
It doesn't have to, but the, under the open law, the Board has to discuss potential release.
Potential release, yeah, okay. All right.
Then I can respond to the request here.
Yep, I understand. All right. So, I will move to enter into, to adjourn from open session, enter into executive session to review slash relieve executive session minutes with the date shown on the agenda with respect to litigation filed by the town of Milton versus the Federal Aviation Administration. Select Board will not return to open session.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus, yes. All right. And then I will move to enter into, to adjourn from open session, enter into executive session to approve executive session minutes as listed on the agenda. The Select Board will not return to open session.
I'll second.